All right, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the May twenty eighth Tourism Advisory Committee meeting. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Pagram. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Cosmickey.
Here.
Commissioner Zenger.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens. Commissioner Jordan. Absent. Commissioner Pagram. And Commissioner Pillsbury. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Can I entertain a motion to approve the acknowledged certificate of posting, please?
So moved.
Do we have a first? Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Great. We'll move on to public comment. This is the opportunity to address the committee on items of interest not appearing on the agenda. Uh, no action can be taken. Do we have any public comment for items not on the agenda?
On Zoom, if you'd like to make a comment, please raise your hand, press the hand icon. And I have no public comment.
Great, thank you very much. That'll take us to minutes. Uh, we'd be approving the Tourism Advisory Committee Action Minutes from March twenty sixth. Um, do we have a first to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Do we have a second? First and second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, great. That would take us to our regular agenda. Um, there's a quick item. The first one, uh, before we get to the zoning code is six point A, which is discuss date, time, and location of the next tour- tourism advisory committee meeting on June twenty fifth, twenty twenty five.
Yeah, yes. So probation has reserved our room, um, from two to six. So we usually start our meeting at two, so we can either do it earlier in the day, that same day, or we can move it to the next day, Thursday. I don't know what your schedules are all like.
The next day, um.
The next meeting would be June twenty fifth.
But you said the next Thursday or the next?
Or that following Thursday, so the twenty sixth.
Oh, the next day.
Just one day over.
Okay, one day over.
The room is available. I don't know your schedule.
Is there any preferences?
I cannot do the twenty sixth, however, Vice Mayor Pichay may be able to do it. I'm not sure. I'd have to check, but I know I am not available on the twenty sixth.
What time did they have this rented to?
From two, two in the afternoon till six. They have a ceremony that they're doing in here.
Okay. Um, yeah, I'd be fine doing it earlier in the day, that day or the next day. It doesn't make a difference to me.
And I could do it earlier on the twenty fifth. I just cannot do the twenty sixth.
Okay, so we have earlier, earlier, or the next day. Any other preference? Either? Okay, okay, so earlier that day.
Same day would be good.
Do we want how, how early?
Yeah.
I don't know what's gonna be on our agenda yet either, so.
We have people that wanna eat lunch, so, um, I would say probably just, well, and they have to set up a little bit too, huh? So we'd probably have to do eleven o'clock or ten o'clock or noon.
Whatever time you tell me, we'll put it down.
Any of those times work for everybody?
Any of the times work for me.
You wanna, wanna do ten to twelve, it's two hours?
I don't think it'll take two hours.
Yeah, I don't think so either, but.
So maybe eleven is.
Eleven.
That's okay with everybody? Okay.
Okay, so June twenty fifth at eleven here in the chambers.
Yes, and before we officially give consensus, is there any public comment on us discussing the date and time of our next meeting?
If you'd like to make a comment on Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And it looks like I have no public comment.
Great, appreciate that. It sounds like we had consensus, so eleven o'clock on June twenty fifth. That would take us to six point B, which, which is receive and accept presentation from the Planning Department regarding twenty, Title Twenty Five zoning code amendments. We have R.L. Goodspeed here. Thank you, R.L.
Hi, good afternoon. My name's R.L. Goodspeed, Principal Planner for the County of San Benito. And I'm here today, uh, to go over, um, a few of the zoning code amendments that are being brought to Planning Commission at a special meeting next Wednesday, June fourth, and then to the Board, um, the second meeting in June. Um, if moved through the Planning Commission next week. Um, uh, the specific policies that are being brought before you today, um, relate to how to promote, um, commercial activities and tourism and kind of permit, uh, uh, streamlining, um, within the Planning Department for such activities. And so what's being proposed in front of you is that allowing, um, without a planning application, um, up to five thousand square feet, so increasing it from twenty-five hundred to five thousand square feet, um, as long as it has fewer than a hundred people or a hundred vehicle trips, um, that it would just require, uh, any, uh, building permits. Um, after that, the threshold, um, from five thousand to ten thousand, um, would then be an administrative use permit, so, uh, director, uh, approval, and then after that would then require Planning Commission approval. So, um, this is specifically affecting uses, uh, mainly in our, um, the commercial uses in our agricultural zones, and I will go through these on the next slides. Um, so existing, um, as uses that can be done are bed and breakfast establishments, hotels or motels, um, but they currently require a conditional use permit. So what would change, um, is that, uh, it be permitted up through those thresholds, um, as you see before you. Uh, on the next slide here, we exist, we existing have wineries in there, um, but to promote additional commercial uses that are still consistent with our general plan, we added items such as breweries or distilleries. Um, these could be standalones or could, um, include, uh, tasting rooms. And again, um, being permitted or an administrative, uh, use permit, they're existing as an administrative use permit, uh, uh, with the thresholds, um, as described, uh, previously. Um, we did include, um, there's been interest in the past about just having offsite tasting rooms not associated with maybe a brewery, distillery. So including that as, as something that would be, um, allowed, um, and, and using those development thresholds. Uh, additionally, we included, um, a venue, um, some of those establishment, the wineries, um, they have shown interest, um, about having it as a venue site, be able to have weddings or small gatherings, um, uh, business corporations being able to come visit. Um, and so, uh, again, adding that as an additional commercial use, um, and using the same design thresholds. Additionally, one of the things, because we are permitting by right, uh, one of the thoughts was to include some architectural, uh, and design standards. So that way internally, we have something to, as planning staff and the director, uh, you know, approving those building permits, um, there's more that they're required. Currently, we already have, um, you know, parking standards and, um, you know, any, uh, public works that we need, uh, there's fire requirements, um, you know, any water, those are all in there. So this is more just about design and adding something in there. And so, uh, we had some things in there, um, specifically for commercial and industrial and our PQP. Um, but we added those into the, um, AR, APR, and RT zones. So those are our agricultural and rural zones and those commercial, uh, uses. Um, some, uh, thoughts behind it was to really try to stick with, um, heritage of our county and, um, surrounding uses. Some of these are actual, uh, photos, uh, within, um, the county. And so this, uh, that's before you is early farmset theme. So some of those characteristics include a primary building, uh, evoking a farmhouse or a secondary building, emulating a barn or various outbuildings, um, uh, kinda having a Victorian or colonial revival, um, or similar period, maybe be the main building. Um, uh, lap sliding, shingles, inner stucco, massing, uh, roof forms, windows, and trim all associated with that architectural style. Um, and then these are, you know, not comprehensive, just adding some photos to, uh, to the zoning code to, um, help provide, um, and are not prescriptive. Um, a second architectural style, uh, was working cattle or horse ranch. Um, key characteristics include one or two major structures with smaller outline structures and open spaces. Um, some of the styles maybe barns or Central Californian style with super central roof pitches, farmhouse in a traditional style, whether in steel, standing seam, uh, wood or similar rustic finishes. Um, and then, uh, the photos, uh, to the left are, um, some ideas, not, not comprehensive. Uh, a last was, um, old California village or small town. Um, you can see we kind of pulled from, uh, San Juan and Tres Pinos. Um, it has kind of those, uh, characteristics, including that small scale building range and, and closed, uh, outdoor public space. Um, stucco building cells, uh, include individual small scale buildings, uh, variable roofs, including gables or Dutch gables or Spanish, uh, influence roof, um, false fronts, um, lean to sheds, uh, clapboards, uh, siding or bare wood, some double hung or casement windows, uh, covered arcades, uh, fronting buildings. Um, and, uh, the photos to the left are actually some buildings around, uh, the county, um, and incorporated, uh, cities. Um, these architectural styles, um, don't necessarily have to be all inclusive. We could maybe include more. We don't have to include, um, architectural styles. It just, um, you know, if we were looking at tourism and promoting tourism, trying to, uh, keep with the idea that we're permitting by right, having some guidelines to go along with that, um, to really draw people in. Um, and so I'm just here to give you the presentation and get any feedback that I can then take to Planning Commission and the Board. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, R.L. We'll go to public comment first and then we'll come back.
If you'd like to make a comment on Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And it looks like I have no public comment.
Very much. Does anybody want, in particular, wanna kick it off? Questions, comments, Supervisor Zinger?
Yeah, yeah, I've got a couple, couple of questions, I guess. Thank you. Um, so just, just on the, I'm, I'm big on the architecture thing. I think it's important to have standards like that. I like that, but it said, I believe it said not limited, but could include. So I guess, what does that mean as far as, uh, the requirements is, since it's permitted by right, do you have to follow these? Or are these suggestions, like, what is legally required, I guess?
Um, so that's something, that's a good topic for here to kinda, uh, suggest. Um, you know, staff had kinda come up with three styles, uh, and it might not be all inclusive of, of every, uh, every option. Um, one of my recommendations would be that if they were to maybe deviate from this, then requiring them to do design review, um, and then design review, uh, does go to Planning Commission per our code. And so that might be an alternative option. Um, the main thing is just, you know, since you're permitting, um, up to certain activities, uh, without going to Planning Commission, just having some kind of, um, requirements, additional requirements with it.
So the way it's written now, though, these are, they would be required to follow these standards. This isn't like, we hope you follow these standards. This is a requirement, the way it's written out, right?
Yeah, and we can edit that to be, um, more of a, a specific requirement to follow this, or I can change it to be to follow this, um, or, uh, would require design review and, uh, Planning Commission approval.
Yeah, cuz, um, you obviously, it's hard to encompass everything that, that would be, that would seem right, right? But if they could, yeah, if we would require it, but then just allow, you know, they could approval of Planning Commission if they have something that seems too far off from any of this, um, that, that would be what I would suggest as far as that goes. Um, I did have another question. As far as uses and what's allowed and whatnot, um, just cuz I'm bringing this question forward, um, since I've had a potential business owner bring this up, is shooting range would be a conditional use permit or permit by right?
Um, shooting range, uh, is gonna be a conditional use permit required.
Okay, got it.
And not part of the commercial uses permitting by right, um, section. Uh, that, uh, that is always gonna require a conditional use permit.
Got it. Okay, um, I believe that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christian. I had a couple of questions for you. Um, thanks for the presentation. Uh, first question is. Oh, your microphone, sorry. It's always one of the, everybody does.
A little button on the base of it?
Nope, I'll show you. Oh, there we go. Oh, perfect. All right. Thanks, everybody. Um, so, yeah, uh, thanks for the presentation. So, uh, two questions are, first, uh, this is going to be, uh, basically applicable to all county, including, uh, unincorporated San Benito, not just, uh, city areas. Is there going to be any sort of, um, uh, envisioned variance between the standards of in, in towns and in unincorporated areas?
Uh, this only applies to unincorporated where we have jurisdiction.
Perfect. Uh, and then the second one, um, is there any thought about including a, um, sustainable or green building standard? Uh, oftentimes in addition, in counties that are a little further down this path than we are in California, that's been an element of their, uh, growth, but also something they talk about with great pride. Um, is that something of interest?
Um, so our building code, uh, actually does a lot of that for us. We'll be updating our next, uh, building code here at the end of the year, going into, um, uh, effect for the next three years. But since our last building code, um, solar is a requirement, um, different building materials are, um, requirement for sustainability. Um, you know, plumbing, you know, all, all of those things. So it's kind of encompassed in the building code.
Great, thank you very much. Jill, you have anything?
I do have a quick question. When you're talking about, was it a hundred cars for, per event? Or a hundred people, they need to get a, um, special permit or?
Yeah, so.
Clarify that for me.
Yeah, absolutely. So what we're doing here, um, anything you do, uh, it requires to go through CEQA when it's a discretionary or you're doing code updates. And so when we evaluate this, instead of, uh, we looked at what could be exempt under CEQA. Otherwise, through this zoning code, we wouldn't be able, we would have to go through, um, either, uh, an M and D or an EIR just to adopt the code. And so what was presented was what are the, the triggers? Um, and one of the big ones is VMT, and VMT requires, uh, that you not have over a hundred, well, it's a hundred and ten trips per day. So we did a hundred just to have that little bit of buffer, making sure we're not accidentally tri- triggering, um, VMT.
And VMT, just for clarity, if, can you explain vehicle miles traveled state?
Yeah, so vehicle miles traveled. So, um, back in, I think it was twenty twenty-two, we went from a level of service on how you evaluate traffic, um, to evaluating what's the distance of miles being traveled. Um, and so, um, under there, they also allow for exemptions. Um, and, uh, under what would trigger, um, a, a VMT analysis and what wouldn't. And so those, uh, that trigger is a hundred and ten trips, uh, per day for an activity. And so, um, or a proposed use. And so that's one of the things we looked at when, uh, coming up with being able to permit, uh, by right.
Okay, thank you.
Additionally, um, you would probably want to see, uh, a permanent use that has, you know, a few hundred people coming. That's something you would want to go through the planning process and go to Planning Commission as, um, as well. One of the things that is in our code, it wasn't presented today, um, is that people could apply for a temporary use permit. And so you're allowed, um, a few times a year, um, to be able to do maybe a larger event. And so that's another avenue to maybe, you know, someone just wants to hold, I think it's either, it's either ten or twelve, um, events per year. Uh, so they would be able to, you know, hold a minimal amount of events that may be larger under that. Um, and that is a discretionary permit, um, that would go through, um, planning, um, as an administrative use.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Roxanne?
Um, not, I, I, not really questions, I just may, maybe comments. So I, I think in general, whenever we can, we can, um, expand a requirement so that it seems to be, make the system more efficient, I'm, I will support that. And I appreciate the, uh, the thoughtfulness of the planning, um, and the board of supervisors, uh, in, in terms of, of asking this group for their input because we obviously want to make sure that there's uniformity in the building, that there's, that it looks good for people, so that it attracts more visitors. So I appreciate that. Um, and, and I am, the only thing that I'm, I'm, um, wondering is, just wondering about the size requirements and what was the reasoning behind the choosing specific size requirements? Um, as well as, um, and would, would there be, or should there be any exceptions to that?
Yes, uh, so it was, uh, we looked at CEQA exemptions, and so it had a lot to do with what we could exempt through the code. And we verified it through our county council's office on, uh, those limits. Um, and so that's how we came up with those particular numbers.
Go ahead, yep. Uh, go ahead, Christian will come in. No, you're okay. Free flowing is fine, go ahead. My apologies. Um, I'm a bad rule follower sometimes. Um, so I did have a question. I did not see here, um, uh, specific coverage of things like, or not exclusion, for things like, um, luxury glamping, these kind of elements which are finding quite a lot of market elsewhere, uh, whether that be something like a, um, uh, you know, well, yurts or these kind of things, either semi-permanent or permanent infrastructure. Um, how do you cover that?
It actually is in our code already. We adopted it, uh, last year. Um, there was, I narrowed the focus of what I was presenting to you today on the particular, um, commercial, uh, uses. Um, however, it is allowed in our code, um, up to nine, uh, campsites, um, and, and then there's some specific. So it's just a permitted by right activity right now. Um, if you exceed the permitted right activity, then you would have to go through a conditional use. Um, and, but yeah, that was something our, our board worked on last year to help, uh, promote cuz it is definitely, um, a big draw right now, um, with tourism.
Great, thanks so much, sorry.
For the Roxanne? Yeah, um, good thoughts, thank you, R.L. Thank you for getting this to us, um, as soon as you did. Uh, she's doing a lot of work and we asked for this to come sooner so we can move some of these things along, um, throughout the year here. Um, just to piggyback off of Supervisor Zanger's, did we wanna make any recommendations on architectural style? Um, that what was presented was having the three architectural styles and then potentially, if you go outside of that realm, then to have a process to go to the Planning Commission for a design review? The question I had before, um, maybe gathering input is, you mentioned there might be some other, you picked three, which seemed like logical, you know, styles to fit in with the country atmosphere here. Were there others that were on the fringe that we might wanna include that wouldn't require the design review?
Yeah, so, uh, there was one other, and I wasn't sure. Um, it was something when they were looking and doing a comprehensive, um, design, when they were looking at the nodes on, along the one oh one, um, you know, like five years ago. Uh, there was one, it was more of like a road stop design. Um, and when I was looking at and reviewing, you know, I know that the focus of the tourism is kind of going along, you know, our pinnacles. And I, it wasn't sure if that would seem out of place to add that kind of style along pinnacles. Uh, it seemed to make sense along like one oh one, um, but it, I was, since the focus was more, you know, getting people to our, um, national park, I wasn't sure if that seemed like an appropriate type of, uh, style. But I'm happy to add that in.
I don't, yeah, I wouldn't see a need personally. I've seen some head nodding, shaking.
Okay.
No, I don't, I would say road stop is more of a lack of a style, I think, and then a style. So I would say no.
Additionally, in our code, we actually prohibit like neon signs and, um, so it just, it didn't seem to fit well. Um, but if there are other styles, uh, maybe I, you know, separate from that to consider, I could look at before bringing to Planning Commission?
I noticed you didn't include water tower. I'm just, I'm.
I haven't seen that it was popular with the public.
I'm, I, it was a joke. I'm glad you didn't include water tower cuz it seems to be in every design lately, um, that we get. Um, but, um, any further thoughts on the architectural styles off of what Supervisor Zanger mentioned? Is, does that make sense to go with the three and then just require that additional design review if they are outside of those?
So.
Is that, and that's, the design review part wasn't included, right?
No, I would add that in, um, which would go to Planning Commission, uh, for recommendation.
Okay. Go ahead.
There's, I'm assuming that there is already a process spelled out that, that, that delineates that process and what somebody would have to go. So it's not like somebody had something that was outside of that, that it would nev, it would not be considered. It would just simply have to go through extra review, right?
Yeah, just extra, um, review. We wanna make sure that we're not just allowing any commercial activity, but we're really like promoting the heritage here and making it a, a sought-after destination.
Great. Um, I guess I would, if you wanted some direction, recommendation from us, I would just, I guess I would entertain a motion to, um, recommend essentially what was presented with the addition of, um, including, uh, design. including a design review if the applicants propose something that, architectural style that is outside of the three included. That's what I'm hearing. Is there a motion?
Yeah.
Unless there's something else that we want to include.
Make the motion as stated.
Is there, first, is there a second? Second. First and a second. All those in favor? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Kozmicke?
Yes.
Commissioner Zenger?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Pagram? Commissioner Pillsbury?
Yes.
Great. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much for that. Good conversation. Oh, did we not do public, we did do public comment, right? We did. Thank you. I was mixed up. So that would take us to our next item, which is six point C, which is receive update and discuss possible models for a hotel incentive program. Discuss other communities' templates to incentivize new lodging in San Bernardino County, along with any other locally driven ideas and give direction on potential recommendations. We have me, myself, here to present. We offered, Supervisor Zenger and I offered to kind of take the reins on the presentation because staff's very, very busy with some other things. And staff was kind enough to provide multiple templates for other hotel incentive programs. We discussed previously that we don't have to reinvent the wheel. There are a lot of other programs out there. So what we've done is essentially compile the list of programs and I'll go through. Do I need to come up there?
If you want to control it or I can stand here and do it?
No, no, I don't want to have to.
It's up there and then you just hit the arrow down.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you, everybody. So yeah, as I was stating, you know, this essentially, I'll go to the first slide. Why should San Bernardino County adopt a program? The programs are tools for communities to attract lodging businesses. We, I believe, at least some of us believe have a shortage of hospitality businesses like this to entice people to stay longer than a day here in the community and visit some of our wonderful attractions we have here, including the wineries, pinnacles, others like San Juan Batista. Having multi-day stays is really the goal. And we've heard recently quite a bit about Pinnacles National Park in particular being filled to the brim and that, you know, essentially we have some challenges there with not only hotels and we're working also on some things with transportation and potentially providing more structured transit to and from Pinnacles. So that'll be another conversation maybe down the road. But for now, we'll stick to hotel incentive programs. We compiled the list to these listed here, which is essentially Hollister has a hotel incentive program that's been in existence for, I believe, close to a decade, I think eight to 10 years. And Solidad, of course, also promotes Pinnacles National Park. And then some other cities, Temecula, Palm Springs. Palm Springs obviously is an outlier when it comes to, you know, attractions and being a tourist. It's kind of like the Las Vegas of California, I guess. And then, and then two other counties, Placer and Santa Barbara counties were included in this. So moving on, Hollister's program in particular, the way that they developed it, as noted here, is providing incentive payments to the potential hotel applicants through T O T reimbursement. So just as a refresher, T O T is essentially the tax that hotels and other lodging businesses pay. You know, per visit essentially, I believe it's 12%. And Hollister has a 10-year term with an additional five years. The first 10 years, the applicant would receive 70% of the T O T reimbursed back. And then there would be an option for, I believe the city council has an option for an additional five years at 33% of T O T back. And then there's an additional stipulation I didn't include that I think is important, which is that the hotel business would have to meet a certain standard. And the one that the city of Hollister uses is, and it's pretty standard when you look at other hotel incentive programs out there, is it's, they use the AAA basically has a program and you have to meet the three diamonds for AAA. There are others we could look at. Other communities use, I think, three, maybe two to three other organizations that do these rating systems. So essentially that's the gist of Hollister's, the kind of the main points of Hollister. Solidad, very similar to Hollister, but has different rules for the different classifications of hotels. The T O T rebate varies based on the classifications of the hotel, what type of hotel it is, between 50 and 70%. And then again, there's a 10-year initial term and an optional five-year extension with a 33% rebate reimbursement. And then they also do include, and I have that for questions at the end, is Solidad does include a T O T reimbursement for existing hotels that want to renovate. And if we did go down that road, I guess the other question beyond that would be, would you want to have a certain threshold of dollar amount that the renovation would occur? And whether we even want to have that sort of program, are there existing hotels in the county that, you know, we would see as being fit for something like that? Because it would obviously apply to currently existing hotel establishments. The Palm Springs highlights, I'll keep it quick because again, Palm Springs, as I said, is obviously an outlier. But they have varying incentives as well. First-class hotels, Comfort Hotels. The first class has higher payments, as you can see, for up to 30 years. And again, I think that's a Palm, but very special to Palm Springs from what we saw in the, in the research. And up to $50 million. And again, the dollar amounts do not apply, obviously, to San Bernardino County. And then the Comfort Hotels, 50% payments, 20 years, 25 million. And then Comfort Hotels with 1500, okay, so the smaller Comfort Hotels have a separate stipulation as well. So they go for 10 years as opposed to the 20 years. And then Temecula, just really basically 50% reimbursement of T O T. And then as far as counties go, Santa Barbara, very similar to Hollister, 70% reimbursement for 15 years, but they also did include a 50% reimbursement of T O T for 10 years. And then Placer County, again, I wanted to make note of Lake Tahoe, an outlier, 80% T O T for 20 years. And then they have, there's a little more layered with additional incentive components. You could always go out and look at some of these programs. They're very easy to find. And then T A U, I don't know why I put that in there, but I wasn't clear what that was. I probably should have taken that out. If anybody knows what T A U is, please enlighten me because I wasn't sure what T A U was. And then again, this is Lake Tahoe, so. And then as far as other questions I thought were applicable, is there a preferred template? Obviously Supervisor Zenger and I have talked about, Hollister already has one. We might want to just consider replicating that to stay on the same page. Should renovations of existing businesses be considered? Should the program include T O T reimbursements or any other planning incentives? And as I said, most of them out there generally focus on T O T. And are there any other thoughts or ideas? And then beyond that, next steps would be refining the preferred program details, which we can hopefully do here today. Recommend a program to the board of supervisors, either today or at a following meeting when we're able to refine things further and maybe work with county council on putting something together. Assign, and then at some point down the road, assigning designees, Supervisor Zenger and I talked about this. Once you have a program in place, we want to get the word out there. And since there are well-known hotel companies out there, it would, it would make sense at the very least to have some designees, whether they're public officials or business organizations, to reach out to major hotel companies to essentially pitch the program, let them know what we're doing, let them know that you're going to do a lot of good business if you put a hotel somewhere between Hollister and Pinnacles National Park because they're full and their people are looking for places to stay. And that is essentially it. So that is my very first presentation at the podium and I'll go back to my seat and leave.
Good job.
And T A U is, is a tourist accommodation unit or generally speaking, a single hotel room or suite.
Okay, so it's, say that again for the microphone.
Oh, yeah. So T A U is a, is a tourist accommodation unit or known as a transient accommodation unit, standardized measurement used to quantify hotel or lodging capacity, refers to generally one room or one suite.
Okay, thank you very much. Probably more complicated than what we were.
I'm wondering if that's like, is that like an Airbnb kind of thing? Like I'm renting a room out in my house and so it's one unit? Is that, do you think that falls into that category maybe?
I'm not a subject matter expert. I would assume that's probably correct.
Probably something like that, right?
Oftentimes we refer to them as keys also.
Yeah.
Individual keys, so a suite if it's two rooms would be considered.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Single accommodation unit.
Yeah.
Is somebody that wants to kick off their thoughts on hotel incentive program? Go ahead, Supervisor.
Okay, I had a couple of questions on this because this obviously is to draw hotels here. But how does this work coincide and work with the, work with San Bernardino County tourism on the T bid project they're working on? They'll also be receiving funds from that to go towards advertisements?
Go ahead, Supervisor.
The what? What was that again, that this county's working on?
So Visit San Bernardino is working on establishing a T bid program where hotels voluntarily enter into this program and they offer a percentage of their revenue basically toward the T bid, which goes and out and essentially puts money toward Visit San Bernardino, which promotes. That's my broad understanding. And Irene's not, I believe, unless Irene's on the Zoom, she could certainly chime in, but that's my broad understanding of the explanation from Irene Davis from Visit San Bernardino. I think it would just be a separate complementary program. This is to attract new hotels.
To build.
The T bid is to leverage existing hotels to, they're, they're investing in themselves, basically. They're saying, we're willing to put some of our revenue toward this Visit San Bernardino or whichever programs there are out there. You know, you all go out there and do the work on promoting our area to bring more people in.
Okay. It was my understanding that the T bid is a tax that is kind of like your hotel tax. And maybe it's a buck fifty on each room. That money goes to San Bernardino County and is in a pool and they had control over.
It doesn't go to San Bernardino County.
But it doesn't, they have control over the marketing aspect of it.
It eventually ends up with, my understanding, I don't want to misspeak.
No, no, I'm just trying to figure out.
Supervisor Zenger was in the meeting with me as well and we talked about this with Ms. Davis. But it eventually ends up with the organizations that go out and promote. I think the county may act as a mechanism to, as an outlet to get the revenue toward them. But, but essentially in a nutshell, the hotels are investing in themselves. They're putting that, some of their revenue toward these promotional organizations in town.
Okay. And, but it was my understanding that every hotel will have this tax because it's a supplemental tax. Whether.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, that's correct.
But this is basically, basically for growth.
That's correct.
Okay, gotcha.
To bring more in.
Yeah, I don't think there's any conflict with stacking them. I don't think that's an issue because I, I believe other places do that because I know other places are in the same, the T bid kind of program. And I don't think it's an issue to have an incentive program as well just because this is, yeah, I guess from, from a new, from ground up, new, you get the, you know, the incentive program to bring them in. And then at that point, it's a separate thing they're dealing with, whereas they're paying for their own marketing basically through the program. So I don't think there's a conflict at all with them, I would say.
Okay.
Questions, comments?
Yeah, I had a.
Zenger?
Yeah, well, I'll just say, like you mentioned, we, I like, I like the Hollister program. I think it's easy. I think it makes sense to just kind of essentially mimic that program. Obviously, it's the city, one of the cities within the county, makes sense. And I actually, beyond that, I do like it compared to other programs. I did, to address a couple of the questions or I guess thoughts brought up. As far as renovations, I, I would say this, this kind of program should not apply to renovations. It should apply to new hotels because that's really what we're trying to do is increase our capacity because we just don't have enough. We're not necessarily, this isn't to, you know, renovate an existing hotel and we need new hotels with more rooms. And so I think this should be specifically for new hotels, not for renovations of existing hotels, the T O T reimbursement. And then my only question with the stars as far as putting like what has to be a certain amount of stars. I don't know enough about that system, how that works. And my only concern would be, we, I, I don't want to take away from, how do I put this? In Paso Robles, there's many of these small boutique hotels. They're not a name brand hotel. It's someone, you know, named it after themselves or whatever it is. And they're small hotels. They have maybe 20 to 40 rooms, something like this. And I don't want them to be excluded from this program because I do think that that is, should be beneficial. So I don't want them to be excluded because, and I just say that because I don't know how the star system works. I don't know if they have to have a certain amount of history to get a certain amount of stars. So you could have a very nice, small, brand-new boutique hotel someone opens and then they don't have the stars, then they don't get the program. So I would just, I just want to flush that out a little bit, I guess, because I don't, I don't, just don't know how that system works. I just want to make sure that we aren't, that we are incentivizing those as well. So I don't know if anyone up here knows about that better.
So I'll just, I'll just make a couple of comments. So first, I, the stars are just basically like how like high-end the hotel is. So I, but I agree with you in general. I don't think we should, I don't think we should do that. I think if we keep it, I like the idea. I agree also with Director Zenger about just duplicating Hollister's. It's pretty simple, straightforward. You know, I think we took into consideration where we live and our size and all of that. So I think it, it matches the, probably the needs of the county. It's more, it's more similar than some of the other programs. I think that would be, just be a really simple way. Also, I think that get it in there and then as time goes on, there's always opportunities to amend a policy if that seems to, like there might, if there needs, if there's a need with the, the county area, if there's some differentiation or there's something different that Hollister's policy did not cover. So I, I kind of like that, just like get that going. It, it does help, I think, with, with attracting new hotels. In terms of the renovation, I had like a little bit of a different thought than Director Zenger. I think we should consider possibly making specific type of renovations, maybe part of this policy. And what my thought was, if, if the renovation was really an expansion, like was going to increase the number of rooms or something, we might want to consider some kind of incentive, maybe not to the same degree. Maybe the percentage is a little lower, maybe it's a different type of incentive. But I think if we have an existing hotel, part of the renovation will include an expansion that would help to bring more visitors, maybe an additional conference rooms or conference rooms or maybe something like that. But I think we should at least consider maybe those where, where the renovation would attract more visitors, like the number of people that they can accommodate, the number of uses for that hotel. So that was just my comment.
I can just add one thing really, really quickly on that, just to clear, to clear up the star question. At the same time, I do recognize that we don't want to incentivize, I put this, very, I'd say low-end hotels, motels that become a, you know, breeding ground for, you know, activities that we don't want, anything like that. So I do want to clarify that. I, I don't know how this would truly work out. I have to think it through a little more. But I'd like to see if there's a way to incentivize, you know, a boutique hotel that doesn't also incentivize something that we're not really looking for, so.
So if I might have got some thoughts on this. So with the diamond levels, three diamonds are, it describes a mid-range enhanced style hotel with elevated, with service, comfort and onsite features. It's not a super high hurdle. And so, you know, I don't know that that's going to represent necessarily a problem. In my experience in the county, we've often had development that has, the development has kind of been heaving lower in terms of the types of hotels, the types of amenities, the, the sort of scale of vision that development has brought. I think there is an opportunity to perhaps de-risk the investment that potential partners would bring in, especially if we're talking about sort of high level of amenities, resort-type service, type builds, which can be relatively expensive, but would be, I think, quite useful for the county. So I think there's, there's a sense of de-risking as being the function. When we talk about, just to touch quickly on your comment about the small hotels in Paso Robles and the like, that's been a fantastic development in Paso. They've done a lot of these. They've done a lot of these basic renovations of historic motels. Same thing's happened in Sonoma County, Napa to a small degree, Santa Barbara, Palm Springs. And so what these communities generally have experienced is they'll have an older sort of motel that's, you know, workaday, use of strange phrase. And what will happen is there's a change in ownership, there's a complete like soup to nuts renovation, where there's an entirely different vision for the future of that property. And I think there actually, there may be properties in, in San Benito that would be appropriate for that. And so it could be, there's a percentage of renovation or a scale of renovation or a change in ownership that presages the, the idea that it would be, that it would trigger for that kind of support as opposed to going, hey, I repainted it, can I get $10 million, please? Which is probably what we want to avoid completely. So then the other thoughts might be, do you have a function around annual turnover, right? Do, is there a minimum turnover requirement so that instead of perhaps rooms, you're talking about sort of ambition for annual revenue? Is there a room minimum to which this applies, sort of cross, crossing with total investment? And then do you get credit for ancillary developments, conference rooms, pools, other amenities, the shooting range you mentioned? Get a theme hotel going? And so I guess these are, these are, this is sort of the surface of, of questions that I would be considering, having in consideration.
Further thoughts? Or Stephen?
I can't really tell, oh, there it's on. I think maybe just based on our conversation, what I think we might need is we might need to tease this out a little bit more, maybe put a little more detail as a draft for us to consider. I think, you know, like, starting with the Hollister policy and then maybe teasing it out a little bit and maybe adding more, a little bit more detail, maybe some of the, the things that came up during all of our comments and then just throw it in there as a draft and then maybe come back, we all have a little more time to consider that, maybe do a little bit more research and then we can finalize it rather than moving forward today with a final recommendation. I, I wonder if we might want to just consider just a little bit more time. So that's just my thought. Because I just think just based on a few of the comments that came up today, just things started kind of whirling in my head. And I think, I think we, we might have an opportunity to really make a good, solid policy that would help to incentivize building of hotels or maybe even just, just the whole idea of encouraging more visitors to the county. And if that means like offering some incentives for renovating an existing building or existing hotel, I think maybe we, we might want to let that marinate a little bit and make that decision. So I would, I would kind of lean towards moving forward with Hollister's draft as a, as kind of the starting point and then maybe teasing out some of those details a little bit more and then coming back with the, with the draft.
I agree. I think that what it has to have is some kind of a value added component to a remodel. Like Christian was saying, it can't be slap some paint on and give me my $2 million. It has to be the pool or the shooting range or, you know, the upgraded rooms. There has to be a value to our county and cities that preclude any incentives for them.
Great. I'm hearing, take Hollister and refine it. The process that we typically might use, Supervisor Zanger loves ad hocks, is to put together an ad hoc, well, a minority of the group. So that would be two or three members of the committee that may hold a meeting between, if there's possibility between now and probably two weeks from now, because there's agenda posting involved, two to three weeks from now, just to go through the Hollister program and just make some, probably sit down, you could even be, be a teams meeting. We don't have Brown Act regulations with these, so you could set up a teams or a Zoom and probably work with county council and just have county council present and just work through the details and bring back something at the June meeting, if possible. Would there be either two or three members that would like to do that? Mr. Pillsbury?
I'll do it.
Supervisor Zanger, anyone else want to do it? And if, it's not, if there's two already, it's Pagan. So I'll, I'll, I can send my notes over as well from what I took out of this, but I'll, I'll rely on Supervisor Zanger to coordinate with, I would probably say county council, just to make sure of legal ramifications. And then the only suggestion that I had in addition to these was to look at the dollar amount because the dollar amount is now dated probably with inflation and everything. So we might want to, just my suggestion would be to take a look at that $2 million.
Yeah.
Dollar amount and see if it might go up to 2.5 or 3. And I would suggest the city of Hollister may want to take a look at yours, maybe once this is flushed out so that hopefully all in alignment.
And on the same page.
And I would actually, I know Mayor Jordan's not here, but I would suggest if there is interest from San Juan, that San Juan may want to consider doing something of a similar nature so that we're all on the same page. To me, yes, it's good to have the revenue for whoever gets it, but this is all about bringing more people into the community because they're going to ultimately visit all of our jurisdictions while they're here. They're going to go to San Juan or they're going to go to the county, they might go to your winery, I think you own a winery, right?
I do, I do.
A winery, they might go to, you know, who knows? Hopefully they don't go to Casa de Fruta. They go everywhere.
And Colin, can I just add one other suggestion? And again, this is just for, something for us to consider. I, I was kind of thinking sort of similar to you about the dollar amount, that maybe we might even want to consider a tiered dollar amount depending on the size, the type, like all of that kind of stuff, maybe. So I think maybe look considering that possibly.
My request would be to not overcomplicate it. Because we can always, as you said, we can always go back and amend.
Sure.
Is to get something, at least to use a template that we know works as opposed to maybe over. That would just be my, but if you have good ideas, go ahead.
Yeah, and I, and the only reason, the thing that spurred that for me is just the comment that Director Zanger made about like maybe a bed and breakfast. We, that's not really what Hollister's looking at. Like Hollister's was really based on the hotels that just recently came up and they're, they're pretty similar in size and function and all of that. So I, I, I think that we, you might be right, that it might be a good time for us to like, to reexamine what we have right now and think maybe refine it a bit. But I do think that $2 million for a large hotel versus $2 million for a, a small bed and breakfast might be, might be, we may want to consider something different. But, and then also in terms of the renovations, and I like the word value added because what are we getting for this? Because ultimately what this means is when there's incentives like this, it means these are not tax dollars that will be recouped by the cities and the, the county in order to, you know, add to their coffers, which, you know, when we do that, we want to make sure we're getting something for that investment, essentially what it is, is an investment. So maybe the renovation as well, if there is something added in there for renovation incentive that it is really about what value are we getting from it? So let's make the dollar amount match. So anyway, so I think I, I just wanted to throw that out there.
Great, good thoughts.
So in terms of, of the ad hoc then, just to be clear, we'll, we'll look at Hollister's and kind of go from there. We're going to look at the, maybe like a renovation thresholds that would apply.
Expansions in particular was something that was thrown out.
Yes, yes. And then the, the max dollar amount potentially tiered, we'll look at that, we'll look at the diamonds. I think that's pretty much it.
And the, the percentage of others have used like a lower percentage for renovations. The 50% example is out there as noted in the slides. I don't know what the right percentage is. And you might have a, a lower threshold on the dollar amount for renovations as well because obviously it may not cost as much to renovate as opposed to building an entirely new.
Yeah, yeah. And I think, yeah, it's just going to take some, some work because I mean, like, like you mentioned, I mean, renovation could essentially be a new hotel, the way, you know, depending on how far you go. But it's like, we're not talking about paint, like, so it is a nuanced sort of thing we're going to have to work through.
Well, one, one other question I would have, which might expand it too far, is does this envision hospitality facilities beyond just hotel rooms? So for instance, if you wanted to renovate a hospitality facility that wasn't overnight stay, would, how would you take that on or would that somehow dovetail into this? Because it is building the hospitality capacity of San Benito County.
But this does focus on T O T, so that would be, T O T is an easy way of doing it where you don't have to, you don't have to budget for it in your budget, it's just money in, money out, basically, it's not. But it's a good thought and maybe once we get this done, we can look at other potential options for, because there are a lot of other programs for business incentives out there. It's not, obviously not just limited to hotels. So that would be good to piggyback on this conversation, maybe once we have an ordinance in place. Okay, great. All right, well, I'll entertain a motion to approve an ad hoc with Supervisor Zanger, Mr. Pillsbury, Ms. Pagan to discuss replicating the Hollister model for hotel incentive program with the discussion points that were brought up. And bringing that back, at least as whatever work had been accomplished in that meeting at the next Tourism Advisory Committee meeting in June. Is there a motion?
Yeah, move is stated.
All right, we have a first, you have a second?
Second.
Oh, real quick, we did, did we do public comment? Public comment, please, before we go.
If you'd like to make a comment on Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And I have no.
All right, so we have a first and we have a second, Mr. Pillsbury. All's in favor, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Cosmicke?
Yes.
Commissioner Zanger?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Pagan?
Yes.
Commissioner Pillsbury?
Yes.
Five oh vote, vote motion passes.
Great, thank you very much. That takes us to committee reports, anything anyone would like to report on upcoming events or anything tourism related?
I'll just say we'll have that done by the next meeting so that we can keep moving this along for the ad hoc.
All right.
We're going to get it done, right? We're going to have it all set by the, by the time we meet again.
How's that rally coming, Mayor Stevens?
It's moving forward. We, we have most of the pieces in place, so we're excited about bringing that to our city and county. So yeah, it's good. And, and the, we will have updates, we should have updates every city council meeting until the rally moving forward. So we look, you know, look forward to visitors and then hopefully we'll see some, some of our businesses really thrive through this event, so, yeah.
Any other further committee reports, Mr. Pillsbury, Ms. Pagan? Hearing none, do we have any public comment on committee reports?
If you'd like to make a comment on Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And I have no public comment.
And do we have any other future agenda items other than the hotel incentive program? Hearing none, do we have any public comment on future agenda items?
Would you, if you'd like to make a comment on Zoom, please raise your hand. I just have one Heidi Balls is on there and she does not. No public comment.
Okay, thank you. That would take us to adjournment, we are adjourned, thank you very much.